Welcome to the House today. I'm here to be the county councillor for the city of San Marcos. And I welcome some of you members who might have slightly as a parent or an employee in place of their parents. I'm sorry.
Maybe I'll go first then.
It's all right. I'm just, I'm talking to you. I wish that the League is to bring such information as we can to all of you and to have an informed vote. And if the League is open to women and men, if anybody is interested to join in, Mary Boarder, a pressure at the table back there, she'll be glad to help them. And the League is, uh, should I say this right? We do not support these candidates, our, our. I'd like to thank the League members that are coming out tonight, John, John, you here, Jimmy Williams, the, the, his, the, the bank manager, Paul Miller, his voter services, and Moss Nick, our voters now, Darlene Roman, Tom Styles, Deborah Nicky, Irene Little, Van Little. And Tommy, for, uh, the, Red Smith and Mary Tyson. And I want to do a special thanks to our bottom right to the United States, who is a required attorney and a League member. Thank you.
Will the candidates for San Marcos City Council member Place Six, please take their places at the table. There are two candidates in this race also, Melissa Derrick and Shane Scott. Each of you will have three minutes to give an introduction. Ms. Derrick, would you begin, please?
I'd like to thank y'all for having us here today. I'm running for office of the state of San Marcos by the bedroom housing deteriorating our quality of life and threatened our river. I will serve my community and let other voices be heard with my vote. I will not put dollars and cents ahead of common sense. We are vibrant and desire the city and we look forward to be picky about who we choose to join us. Big money interests are not the only ones with property rights. I will protect yours. I will push hard for good jobs, I will push hard for good jobs and benefits. I will follow our master plan and ensure that our land development code continues to be updated in accordance with it. Time for rezoning for whoever offers us something is over. An outdated master plan is no longer an excuse to go without a plan. We have a direct roadmap to use with our master plan in San Marcos. And on the rare occasion that we do bear from a plan, it better be for a reason that benefits all stakeholders and it must be very necessary. We need to strive to protect our clean, beautiful river, our single-family neighborhoods. We'll continue to work to create a dynamic downtown for the life of music, arts, and unique small businesses. I also like to clear up some confusion about a quote in a local newspaper. I am not charging or limiting access to our community treasure, the San Marcos River. I do not now nor will I ever support such limitations. I have two small businesses in San Marcos under which my leadership has become very successful. After receiving a BA at Texas State, I have worked there for 20 years managing budgets much like those at the city level. My knowledge of budgets, grants, our city codes, along with my passion for San Marcos may be uniquely qualified for council. I'm a volunteer, not politician. I am in this race to hold one of the top volunteer positions available in our community. I have served on the city charter review committee. I'm a member of the San Marcos River Foundation and I'm a neighborhood commissioner for Sector Two, while also acting as board advisor's treasurer for Catherine Am Porter. I'm proud to have been on the neighborhood commission when we worked with the former Real Estate Association to craft a parental nuisance abatement code. After much compromise on both sides, we did come back with a nuisance abatement code that will work to protect homeowners and real estate alike. I'm ready to go back to the community that has given so much to me and my family. I hope you will continue to receive points.
Mr. Scott?
Thank you. I'm Shane Scott. Thank you for having me here again for the third time. At this change, I was from the Air Force, came here to go to college, raised a family here, very committed in this university, very committed to commuting here. There's a lot of issues that we have solved as of the time when it was elected, 2010 to now. There's a lot more to solve in the future. The growth that we've sustained and that we're continuing to have happen in this community is critical. As I graduated from Texas State, time to call Southwest Texas, there were no jobs available and I had no choice but to move my company to Austin and commute every day. Now with my daughter graduating from high school and going to college and my wife and I having another baby in February, I think it's critical to be able to have your children come back home and be able to work in this community that we all love so much. And only through growth are we going to be able to have that happen for us. Only through working with the community and the citizens and the university, which hit another record number in growth in students as well, are we going to be able to do that. So, that's my commitment. I have an agenda. I do this because I enjoy problem solving and I'll continue to do it as long as you want. Thank you.
We'll move down to questions from the League. First question. With the current population growth of the city, has the San Marcos City government kept up with increasing demands? Please explain your answer. Mr. Scott?
Are you demands and populations, I was just going to.
Increasing demands is what the question says. I have some.
Well, we'll go with the population. We are slowly keeping up with demands. Like I stated in the beginning, one of my early objection, objections, objectives were to get the students, which are hearing complaints about, out of the neighborhoods. So that's why rent by the bedroom housing became very popular. The students really did like it. They really enjoyed being in a community away from neighborhoods where they could be students. Very much supportive of that and I feel like it's really helped newer families coming to San Marcos actually have neighborhoods to go to now due to our housing shortage, which that is slowly coming as well with the passearobos and the theme and other big housing projects that are actually in the works of being built now and providing for housing. It's a very slow process, but it has been in the works and it has, we will see the light of day soon.
Ms. Derrick?
I believe we have kept up with the great demand for student housing. I would have not agreed that this moved out of the neighborhoods. It was placed exactly in the neighborhoods that were already being disrupted by college students renting individual houses there. So now as a community, instead of having to worry about a couple of students that were on your street, we now have a thousand of them living in cottage style, rent by the bedroom housing projects with giant swimming pools in the middle. You've all heard about hashtag retreat and the student that drove his pickup truck into the pool and all these kinds of things. And because they're, they're not, they don't have to allow for parking for visitors, the parking is, the parking requirements are really low. The visitors of those student housing complexes spill over into the neighborhoods and they throw beer cans and they cause nuisance. And we need to get housing for executives and we need to get housing, multi-family housing for families.
Just going to have 30 seconds to do it.
And that's a good example. Retreat's a great example. When we first approved it, it seemed like, oh lord, everything's just, we're head over and everything's gonna, you know, create chaos. And initially it did. And then through new ordinances and working with the community, we had parking passes and permits for those neighbors. And now the neighbors and people that I talked to in that neighborhood are very happy with the situation.
Next question. The question is, how can the city address the cost and availability of water for its future needs? Ms. Derrick?
I think the city's already done a pretty good job of securing water rates for the future. In fact, right now, we do sell some of our unused water to other communities and communities around us that didn't have the planning and forethought that we did to gain rights to water that they did not currently need, but would use, but would need somewhere in the future. I know that water rates have increased by a slight percentage and I think it's something that most people, you know, that are, that are still working can shoulder. But when you're talking about our senior citizens that are on fixed incomes or maybe people with disabilities that are looking on disability checks, I really do believe that as the water rates increase, they should stay stagnant for people that don't have an increasing income.
Mr. Scott?
And that's actually true. Our water rates are very much taking care of the wage in 2027. Ever since I've been on council, I've noticed that we make a pretty good amount of money off of the proceeds of our collection bills. And I've always said we've got to create a rate stabilization fund to keep the rates stable, to keep them low, so that our citizens can benefit from the profit. That doesn't go over well. It doesn't go over well with the water department, doesn't go over, like, the other council members kind of on board with it. And, but I still push for that every time you hear a water rate increase, I vote no because I really would like that stabilization to help our citizens. We deserve the profit, you know, as citizens here in San Marcos.
Ms. Derrick, for both. The next question. Are you in favor of establishing a no-kill policy for the San Marcos Animal Shelter? Please explain. Mr. Scott?
Well, I just picked up a little dog, Lea, at the animal shelter, actually, on Thursday. So, um, my wife and I, we talk about this quite a bit and she is, can save every animal that she runs into, she will not go to the pet center at all. So I would love to find ways, and I've actually worked with the animal shelter to try to find better ways to get people more involved. We actually, I talked to him behalf of a crematorium, or had one at one point, and I thought that would be a great idea when somebody loses their pet, they can have a funeral service that they can pay for, use that money for the proceeds to help the foundation there, but also be there to perhaps adopt another pet. Also, when you go into there, it seems kind of hot, so I'm talking with the city manager now, we'll put an AC in there so you can spend more time in there and kind of get to know the animals better.
Ms. Derrick? I currently have three rescue dogs that I've adopted over the last six or seven years. So I, I'm one of those that if I could save every animal, I would, but I understand the cost and I understand that currently, right now, the budget for the San Marcos Animal Shelter is not such that they can sustain 100% no-kill. I would be very interested in getting involved with that once on council, to try to find federal funding, to brainstorm with them, to figure out different ways that they, that they could sustain a no-kill shelter like they have in Austin, Austin Pets Alive. I know there's, that Austin Pets Alive has tried to collaborate with, with our shelter here in San Marcos and it has been successful in the past, but I would definitely need for no-kill if we could make it work financially.
One of the ideas that we've bounced around and I've actually heard, talked to with another council member, is there are places in the United States that do not have the access to animals that we have and actually making agreements that we could actually fly them to those places, the animals, instead of killing them. My mom had a rescue center there down in Cabo for years, so I've been around animal rescue, pretty much on the high.
Our final lead question. Now that we have professional management for the airport, do we still need to continue the airport commission? Please explain.
I've been following this and all the discussions that have been had regarding the management of the airport and I do believe that we should keep the airport commission as in an advisory capacity on some levels because it would just be the smart thing to do right now. I don't think that you ever just want to take an advisory board and dissolve it immediately. We do have good management in the airport and they're taking care of the day-to-day. And there may be, there may come a time where we don't deem it necessary to have the airport commission to advise us, but I feel like right now we're not in that position and we need to keep them in advisory capacity.
Mr. Scott?
I'm actually a pilot. We have a plane out there and I think it's actually important to have an advisory commission out there. I do trust our management that we do have and they have great ideas that come in, but sometimes you need the people who actually work out there in the airport, do the day-to-day and make their living there, to have influence on things that could help them and benefit from them as well. And I kind of, in, you know, pretty good debates about the man, with the management company and, you know, the rights of citizens to have a plane out there as well. A lot of older businesses that are out of the airport and I don't want to see them get pushed out or their rates increase just because they want more growth. And we have so much growth room out there to grow, I would rather like to funding and grow, grow newer buildings or build newer buildings and have those filled up and keep theirs when they finally get rid of the buildings or they retire, than tear it down again.
Ms. Derrick, for both.
It's not really a rebuttal, but I am very excited about the growth of our airport and I think all of us would like to have, to see that be more useful to us in San Marcos. It's been a slow start and it's been out there forever and you never did hear anything about it, you know, 15 years ago or so, but it's really something that I think that as we grow and as we draw business to us, people like Amazon and the like, they will need these kind of resources and I'm glad that we have them and I'm glad that the airport is continuing to, continue to grow.
Are there any questions from the audience? Please come up to the podium, state your name. You have 30 seconds for your questions.
Hi, I'm Lisa Serena of Alameda. This question's for Mr. Scott. You said at the Code of Debate that Cape's Camp Landowners had a right to sell their property and it was the rezoning of the multifamily that allowed that development to occur. Did they have the right to rezon in your mind and does the owner of a 10-acre lot in my neighborhood have a right to build a multifamily apartment, too?
You have to slow down a little, some of them. Okay, you're saying they had the right.
Lower, you're reading slower.
Yeah, I'm slowing, yeah.
Real slow. You said in the Code of Debate that Cape's Camp Landowners, I don't know which part you didn't get, had a right to sell their property, yet it was the rezoning to multifamily that allowed that development to occur. Did they have the right to rezon in your mind and does the owner of a 10-acre lot in my neighborhood have the right to build multifamily apartments, too?
Yes, they had the right to rezon and I don't know. I don't know the conditions of your law.
Ms. Derrick?
I spoke for over a year against the apartment complexes on Cape's Camp. It wasn't the best for the highest use of the property and I don't think there are many people in this room who would think otherwise. 74% of voters voted that they would like that to be parkland. What we got were, it was yet again, another student housing complex in a single-family neighborhood. They are now going through all of the issues that all of the other neighborhoods have gone through that have been settled with these 1,000-bedroom student housing complexes. I'm on the neighborhood commission and I'm attempting to work with that neighborhood right now to decide whether they're going to get parking stickers or what they're going to do to keep the apartment shenanigans from overflowing into their neighborhoods.
Another question from the audience?
My name is Lee Ryan. This is a question for Mr. Scott. Do you really believe that 1,000-bedroom rent-by-the-bedroom apartments, apartment complexes are neighborhood compatible, being placed right across the street from quiet, well-established, single-family neighborhoods?
In that particular situation, yes, it works.
Ms. Derrick? I don't know what particular situation he's talking about, so I'll just refer to them in general. They're incompatible and anyone who lives next to one or knows someone who lives next to one knows that they're incompatible. It doesn't matter if you get a parking sticker or what you do, they're still very noisy. They finally put one in next to me after years of me going and speaking against these developments back, I believe it was last August when they put cats doing cottages in. And my neighbors are, they have small children. We have about seven or eight children under the age of probably eight years old on my street. Their kids can't sleep at night. They're calling the police constantly. They feel like they can't hang out in their backyard because of the profanity and just the loud parties going on at the pool. And it really deteriorates your quality of life and we're homeowners. So it's our biggest investment that we ever make. You know, a lot of us are hoping that we get to retire on the equity of our home and we won't be able to if our lives and our homes have been deteriorated to the point they're not worth anything.
Are there other questions from the audience?
David Woodliss is for Mr. Scott.
Please speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
David Woodliss is for Mr. Scott. He recently accepted $1,000 conservation of the principal in the company High Point Trace, Mrs. Karen Williams, that is seeking $19 billion PIB incentive for the city that is scheduled for vote in two weeks. Would you say that citizens feel that this is inappropriate and even intend to keep the contribution?
Well, I don't think it's inappropriate, actually. It's inappropriate. I wasn't on the committee that decided the facts or the negotiations that went on for that development. Out of that, some three other council members participated in that. So as far as will I keep it, I have kept it, I haven't spent it, it's still there, along with all the other contributions that I have.
Ms. Derrick? I want to help the citizens can be assured that Mr. Scott's going to be able to make an unbiased decision or an impartial decision when he's accepted a $1,000 donation from someone and the vote is in two weeks. Our city charter, and I was on the charter review committee, so, or commission, so I was very familiar with the ethics portion of it. And as a city council member, you're supposed to steer away from anything that can even get the appearance of impropriety. And I think that anyone that sees a $1,000 donation and then knows that you're going to be voting for that person, they have a $19 million bid on the line, is going to seriously wonder whether that vote of hers is purchased or not. Just my opinion.
Is there another audience question?
Welcome here again. You guys, I really appreciate your frankness and expressing your feelings over the last few years in, about our town and I just wondering, like, why, why do you want to be city council?
Ms. Derrick, if you want to start then, please.
I, I started that in my opening statement. I'm a volunteer, currently volunteering on three different efforts that are really important to me, one of them being Catherine Am Porter School in Wimberley that services 50% of our high school-led students here in San Marcos. They're the round pegs that don't fit into the square holes, kind of the creative ones that just are probably through the cracks in the school system. I have two businesses here. I've lived in San Marcos for the better part of the last 26 years. I raised my children here. I have so many friends and so many, you know, wonderful, there are just so many wonderful people in the city. And, you know, seeing a lot of their quality of lives degraded by the decisions that were being made by the current council, not the current council, but past councils, and the current one has made some of those decisions as well, I just really would like to make a difference. I would like to put my stamp on this town and as it grows, be able to say that we're going to get high, high-quality developments and that we're not going to disrupt the neighborhoods.
Mr. Scott?
I enjoy problem solving and that's one of the main reasons. But actually, just to show leadership for my children and my family, I think it's important that you lead by example and you be independent, you be extremely independent. I don't, I feel that I'm a lot more independent than actually even prior people who ran against me because I don't follow the special interest groups. There's a small faction that come out and they complain about everything and they say we did the worst for everything and they, they make up things that, you know, like the flooding caused, you know, the woods department caused the flooding, which is proven by science that that wasn't the case at all. And I don't want to see that get in there. I don't want to see our town be led by a small faction of special interest people. I only want independent people in there that think about the community as a whole and everybody. Thank you.
If there are no other questions from the audience, I have one more question.
My name is Jay Ger, Sierra Circle.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Ger, live on Sierra Circle. My question is, because I'm very concerned about these massive rent by the bedroom, 1,000 bedroom student housing projects. You know, it always seems to me that they're all being built, but they're being built in areas that are not in my backyard, not in the projects. My question to you, because I understand, Mr. Scott, you live over in the Los Angeles area, there's quite a lot of land up there, but to support a 1,000-bedroom apartment complex to be built in the Los Angeles area.
Student housing or just apartments in general?
Rent by the bedroom student housing.
Yeah, again, that's, that's created by markets and markets they would run. Unfortunately, nobody would build rent by the bedroom, like, this is two parts of town. Those are built around universities that have walkability and that's the whole reason behind it. You can lower the impact of traffic on our streets to lower the impact congestion that that creates. So if you have housing markets for the students that are built by the university, you can walk, ride your bike, there's shuttle services. One thing they didn't even think about, the woods, they complained about it. We've made sure at the PDE that they had shuttle service, that the kids aren't driving back and forth. So there isn't a traffic impact issue, even though they say that there is, but the truth there isn't and we have studies to prove it. So that's driven by markets.
Ms. Derrick? I agree 100% with Mr. Scott. It is driven by market and there is no market that far away for housing and I would guess that's probably why he lives there. You know, if I had chosen to live far outside of the city limits, I would have been safe. But I thought that I was safe by purchasing a, purchasing a home where I did because there was no zoning for the rent by the bedroom housing and then it was rezoned. So I think a lot of us don't feel safe anymore, but I believe you are safe where you are. And there are also, like, a minister will have there in school. So the game problems at San Marcos High School that a lot of us have to deal with, you won't have to deal with that either. But it is market-driven and the market is here. It's right here in the center of San Marcos where we are. And I think that our master plan will dictate how we can correct the situation and begin to place these in the places that they need to be in that neighborhood.
At this point, we'll move on to closing statements. Mr. Scott, would you please, you have one minute to close.
Actually, my other house, my wife may do move out there, but actually I, the house that I have actually raised my family and it's in, by the Aspen Apartments, exactly by the rent by the bedroom places as well. It's right there, a little Hispanic neighborhood, you know, I've been there since 1994, so I think that was kind of an interesting stamp. But in closing, whoever you vote for, just make sure you understand that what you're voting for, it's not just about rent by the room, it's not just about making a platform of a flood or anything like that to run all of them. It's about being able to trust that they're voting for everybody as a whole and not specific special interest group. And I think that's critical and I think that's the most important thing I can say. I hope you vote and I look forward to, you know, seeing you represent the unit again. Thank you.
Ms. Derrick?
If I represent a special interest group, it's the citizens of San Marcos and I'm proud to do that. I'm excited about building our future together. I want to be your voice in your vote on council. I want to help cultivate cross-first economy with all setting high standards for employers, developers, and businesses that we invite to join us. With the local growth ahead of us, I can promise you that I will be pro-responsible, compatible growth, and protect and preserve the unique charm of our city. If we stick to our plan, we have a San Marcos we planned and not the one dictated by developers. Amazon is the game changer that we've all been waiting for. From this point forward, what we do can't be undone. We can't undo, Cape's Camp, we can't undo bad decisions made by this next council. I have the wisdom, passion, and ability to help guide San Marcos during this time of growth and I'm asking for your vote. My name is Melissa Derrick. Thank you.
Thank you both for your attendance. Thank you for being here tonight today. Thank you for your participation, for trying to become an informed voter. It's important. Your vote does count. Make democracy work. Make sure you cast your vote. Thank you for your attention.